I'd like to call this November 9th, 2023 Board of Education Work Session to Order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Ms. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Thocheck?
Here.
Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
I'm present.
We stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our district's three-year strategic plan is made up of four strategic priorities. Tonight's meeting includes an annual presentation about student wellness and success funds. This will have ties to one of our strategic priorities, aligning staff and resources, as well as an objective as part of this priority that develops plans to allocate resources to address the social, emotional, mental health, and behavioral needs of our students. Next on our agenda is public comment. I do not have any slips. With that, I will turn over to George for the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausen. Tonight, for you, I have two presentations that you touched on. One is the Student Wellness Report Athletic Fund Quarterly Update, and then an item to take action on. The first item is the Student Wellness Success Funds Annual Presentation. I'm going to co-present that with Mrs. Palco. What this is, is the student wellness success funds that we received from the state as part of the 23-24 biannual budget. One of the requirements was to, that we have to have a board presentation to the board in the community, and then also post it to our website. So this will meet that requirement. Just a little history of the student wellness and success funds. In the state budget of 2020-2021 biannual budget, the student success and wellness funds were originally approved as a separate state grant outside of the general fund. In the following biennial budget, '22 to '23 fiscal years, the funds were moved from the separate state grant into the general fund as part of restricted funds within the state funding formula. And then, in the current state biennial budget, which began this fiscal year, '23 through '24, it continues funding through the state funding formula as part of restricted funds and within the general fund with additional requirements. And those being, the additional requirements are now, require these funds must also include a plan with both a community mental health partner or a treatment provider and another community partner. Before, it was just one of those. Now, for each item, there has to be these two. As I mentioned earlier, the plan must be shared at a public meeting and posted on the district website. Half the funds must be used for mental and physical healthcare services. All existing funds must be spent by fiscal year '24-'25, which is next fiscal year. And what it means by "all existing funds" is the funds that were given prior, in the prior years. Those must be spent. And then, any new funds will allow for a one-year carryover. The allowable uses for the funds, defined by the, defined in, under the state budget, which is also a part of a higher revised code, the allowable uses for the funds are mental health services, physical health services, culturally appropriate prevention services, homeless youth services, child welfare involved with youth services, community liaisons and programming, family engagement activities, and before and after-school programming. And for additional details, this presentation is linked on the agenda for anyone to view. The link down here takes you to the OD website, which has additional details for each item. So the financial overview for the funds. So initially, when this was first distributed, the first two years, they were in a separate state grant, so we had an account for these in a state grant, which was under Fund 467. The first year, we were given $175,000. That first year, we didn't use the funds. We were developing a plan on how to use them, and we began using them in fiscal year '21, which was the second year. And in total, what rolled over was $440,000. We began using them in fiscal year '21 through the following years. And then, the current fiscal year of that original, of the original state grants, there is $17,959 left. That will be used up this year, and this goes for the services that are provided by Nancy Lowery and Mindfully and Family First Solutions. And then, the general fund restricted, kind of mimicking the five-year forecast on this. In fiscal year 2022, these funds started going into the general fund. We received $258,000 in fiscal year '22. We spent $113,000. Last fiscal year, we received an additional $224,000, so we had 369,000 available resources. We spent $252,000. This year, we have $360,000 of available resources, and the plan is to spend 269,000 and carry over 90,000. As you will see, in the, in the following years, each year, the requirement from the state decreases. So by having that little bit of a carryover allows us to stretch it over a few years as those expenses that are associated with the wellness funds continue to grow and the revenue will decrease. So at some point, we'll have to continue to funding. We'll meet a requirement, but we'll make a decision, do we want to keep funding what we're funding, or reduce it based on the requirement that we receive. What we're spending the dollars on, I'll turn it, turn it over to Mrs. Palco, who can kind of go into detail on what we're spending the dollars on this year.
Thank you, George. As George outlined a few slides back on our focus and what we can use the funds for, we've elected to use the funds primarily on mental health services for students, on prevention as well, and finally, on behavioral wellness. So those are the three areas, I think, that we focused in on as we looked at together as a district team how to spend these funds. And so, one of the things that we have in our district is a partnership with Nancy Lowery Associates. It's now termed Mindfully and Family First Solutions. So we have two companies, actually, that work with our families and students. We have therapists. This is beyond a school counselor. These are the actual therapists, behavioral therapists, that can work not only with the student, but also with their families. And the unique part of this program is that they can provide that therapy within the school day. Mindfully also offers therapy outside if families wanted to go to the office, but primarily, it's such a convenience for families who can't get in or don't have the means to get their child to a provider, that this therapy can happen within the school day, and the counselors have spaces within our buildings to do that. It really is on an, on demand service, so the more that need the help, the more therapists we can allocate. I know both companies, just in the last probably a few weeks, have added another therapist to our district. And so, what it typically does is it uses the family's insurance that they have to cover the cost of the therapy. So most families have insurance and can afford their copays and are able to access them, and so it is no cost to the district. What we allocated the money for, as you can see up there, is to provide therapy for students that might be experiencing, or families that are experiencing a hardship. So sometimes, there are things that happen. I know, you know, in the past, we've had families that have experienced a traumatic event, or, you know, going through divorce or something where the insurance has lapsed or something is going on, or their, their insurance is not necessarily accepted by this company. And so, what we take a look at is they go through a process, and then we're able to help either with a copay or fully fund the therapy, because, you know, when something like that happens, therapy is needed immediately. So we try to do that. So that's where that one is allocated for. For district social workers is our next area. So we were able to hire actually two social workers. I think one is covered by, by this cost. George, is that correct?
Both of them are.
Both of them are? Okay.
The cost there makes up for both of them.
That's right. Okay. So what this had, this is another level. Our social workers are also therapists and can provide that therapy, but they also have access to lots of services and help for families and provide that wraparound service and work in conjunction with other, other therapists, families, and the district to provide ongoing therapy. And what's nice about it is they are there all the time, so if there's something that happens, they can be easily accessible and, and work directly with the student as needed. Our elementary school counselors, so this, these dollars allowed us to employ one full-time counselor at every single building. So we no longer have counselors that have to travel between especially our elementary buildings, and they are able to provide additional lessons that way because they're not traveling, and then there's no lapse in service. If a student needs their counselor, they're there every single day, and they don't have to wait until Tuesday till they show back up. So it's been a really big value. And I will just share, our elementary school counselors collaborate so nicely together that they're working on the same lessons and the same experiences for kids, and so that helps make it an equitable experience for all kids. And finally, our PBIS consultants. So this is our community partner here, where we have two consultants in the district that attend our PBIS meetings within our buildings regularly. Our administrators can reach out to them if they have questions or need talking points or assistance in filling out some of the paperwork that goes along with this program and this mandate that we go with. And it's, you know, I've been in several meetings where they're there, and they're able to quickly clarify if there's misconceptions about PBIS, or teachers have questions about the data, or exactly what they're supposed to do. They're there to clarify that immediately and, and get, make sure that the teams are on the right track. So overall, that is what we're spending our money on. And then, as George mentioned, we, we do have to have community partners. And so, we primarily partner with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, and then Mindly Fully and Family First Solutions also serve as our partners, and they are supporting all of these areas, ongoing support.
And that's it. If there's any questions?
I just have one question. Can you clarify the difference between the, like, degrees or licensures of the therapist versus what the school counselor has?
Right. So a school counselor is, you know, they are, they are licensed through the state as a school counselor. So they are there to primarily, you know, meet with students that have, you know, questions, obviously with school, academics, programming, those kinds of things, as well as if they're having some maybe temporary trouble at school, you know, maybe they have, and they're having an argument with another peer. So to kind of help them, you know, regulate their emotions in the moment and come up with maybe a plan for working with their peers or working with an adult if that's the case. So it's more of a temporary issue. If it goes deeper, where there are, you know, other factors, maybe there are other, you know, deeper family issues, or there's been traumatic events, they would typically recommend them to one of our therapists to work with, or our social workers to work with, especially if it's going to be ongoing therapy that is, you know, dealing with, I won't get into too many details, but dealing with just emotions and ongoing issues, you know, school counselors typically are not equipped to deal with that kind of therapy.
Do school counselors typically come out of the teaching track as opposed to the?
Not necessarily. We do have some counselors that were teachers and now are counselors, but we also have counselors that just went to school for school counseling.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. And then, moving on to the next item. At the beginning of the school year, because we're planning out the budget process, the board, we had a series of presentations regarding athletics and increasing the athletics department's budget. With that, the board increased the athletics department budget by $150,000 and had asked for quarterly updates as to that budget in action. So I have Denny and Jason here to kind of give an update. Denny will cover the high school, and Jason will cover the middle school.
Thank you, George. We appreciate the opportunity to share, you know, a quarterly update since the fall sports season has just ended. So overall, looking at the high school revenue, you know, some of the numbers you'll see is just, some of those are just sports that haven't happened yet, whereas the fall sports on the next slide is more of a snapshot of exactly what we brought in. And a lot of our revenues are going to be strictly ticket-based from our ticket sales. So as you'll see, for the high school, all these are our fall sports, and then what we budgeted, and then what we actually brought in. A lot of the increase that you'll see was the GCC Conference as a whole in May voted to approve a ticket raise. So instead of having student fees, they went more to a flat rate for students and adults. What we were seeing across the board is a lot of adults were purchasing student tickets at a lower rate. So to eliminate that, what we did is, as a conference, we went to a flat fee for adults and students. So the data here, boys soccer was a lot less because we had 42 less home games this year. Last year, I believe they had 12 home games, and this year, we had five or six. That was it. So next year, I would venture to say that that schedule is going to be a lot more balanced with our scheduling and our conference. And then, last year, we also didn't have, you know, the Shaker Heights, the Cleveland Heights that we did this year. So I think our schedule is going to be a lot more balanced than next year to have an eight-and-eight or a nine-and-eight home versus away schedule. Football went up almost 21,000. I think a lot of that has to do with, again, the ticket increase from our conference, but also we did host, or, you know, we brought back the community tailgate, the first game, which was a huge success for us, you know, so that generated a lot of the population. I do think the elementary nights help, as well as the youth nights that we offer for a lot of our other teams to come. So I look for that number to stay, you know, pretty consistent. And also, we changed our schedule up a little bit. So I think just adding some newer and different opponents helps bring a lot more traffic to us. And I do think next year, our schedule is going to be the same but flipped, so our home and away schedules are going to be balanced, but I think our population is going to be very, very similar to what it was this year. And then, the other sports obviously went up. You know, our girls soccer went up almost 5,000. There were more home, home games this year than last year. Obviously, the reversal of boys, when our boys are playing home, our girls are on the road. And then also with the success that they had this season as well, that brought a lot more in. They also did a lot more community nights, so that was a huge, huge turnout. And then, they also hosted for, for the first time ever, a weekend showcase, where we had four schools, and we played varsity as well as a lot of JV games. So there was more, you know, just student, or more revenue just based off of, off of that showcase that we hosted. And then volleyball, you know, went up a little bit, same reasons, a couple more home games, and then the increase in ticket prices from our conference. So overall, right now, or, you know, from the fall sports, we were positive, 26,000, and we had budgeted 101,000.
So moving into expenses, and again, this is for all sports. In total, for the high school athletic department, the total expenses were budgeted at 323,000. Year-to-date, actual so far, 132,000. For the most part, for the fall sports, they're trending under. However, I couldn't break out, the, each sport has like various categories, game workers, supplies, and equipment. It would have been too much to break those out individually. But within each sport, right now, some of the game workers that we're seeing, the cost for the game workers are trending a little bit over budget, while we're able to cover that under some of the savings that we have under those expenses. But for the fall sports, we still have one more payment to do for fall game workers to get that finalized. For the football, you'll see a bigger variance for under budget, and that's, a lot of that expenses happens after the season. Once the season's over, the equipment gets sent out to be inspected and reconditioned to, to be prepared for next school year, or next football season, but that's covered under this year's budget for expense, and also replacing the uniforms for the upcoming season. So right now, it's, for the most part, the fall sports are trending under, but we have one more payment for game workers to get that finalized, and the game workers were trending a little higher, based, based on what we had, based on how we budgeted. Turning it back over to Denny to talk about some of the new expenses that were purchased with the budget for, for the school year.
Sure. So you'll see the top here are just some of the new things that we were able to purchase. You know, the basic needs, obviously, football pants for games, you know, girls soccer, white, white and green jerseys. We were actually with that. Last year, we were out of compliance. Our home jerseys did have too much white in it, so we were, I think was given 18 months to correct that issue. So we were able to do that with our white and, and our green jerseys. Girls tennis got new tank tops. Girls basketball, you know, those are fill-in jerseys, either with ripped or torn jerseys, numbers falling off from the stickers, you know, whatever the case may be. So that's what that fill-in number is. You know, and then obviously, football helmets, the number of our football participants continues to grow. So the number of, you know, helmets that we have to have for the correct sizes is what that cost is. Our golf team has played in numerous tournaments in league without any sort of shade, so we were able to purchase golf, golf umbrellas for them. That is going to help them. We are redoing our entire track area, our shot area, and our discus area is moving towards the new tennis courts. So the discus circle was purchased to be able to do that, to move that, you know, completely over to that area. And then, we just got done with lacrosse goals and nets that are going to be placed at the middle school. Right now, down there, they have old, like, plastic practice goals and nets that are bent from, from the weather. So to be able to have that down there now, there is not the transporting of our game goals and our practice goals from the high school to the middle school, and vice versa, so that's able to stay down there. Some things that we're looking forward to this winter and, and spring, baseball hats, you know, that's a uniform cost for us. Some girls wrestling tournament fees. We've seen an abundance of girls, you know, interested in wrestling. I think right now, we have 11 girls, you know, that have been interested in it. So be able to provide them tournaments to go to that they are just strictly wrestling other females and not males, but then also being able to go and do some league matches with some other schools that do have a girls wrestling program. A volleyball net storage cart, that's going to keep our volleyball net in good and clean condition. That's a brand-new net. And with our PE classes using it, as well as the volleyball team, as well as boys volleyball, it gets a lot of use. So being able to keep that nice and untangled and clean is something that we think is valuable for the programs. You know, some uniforms for the boys and girls lacrosse teams. And then, as George mentioned, the potential purchase of helmets if some are seen cracked or not usable, or just are deemed to, or are past their warranty date. And then, just some of those items that I talked about in, in action, as you can see, you know, girls soccer uniforms, football helmets, football pants, girls tennis tank tops, the umbrellas for golf, are just some of the items that were able to be used. And then, I wanted just to touch on, you know, kind of give you guys a snapshot of where our progress has been made with our sports. So just looking at the GCC over the last three years, these are where our teams have finished conference-wise. You know, and obviously, some of the numbers went up and some of them went down with, you know, 2023, with two new schools coming in to our league. That pushed our number to seven in some of the sports and six in other sports. But for the most part, you can see that, you know, we've had pretty good success in a lot of our programs. You know, still some work to do, but I will say, three fall teams that had state qualifiers this year, I think is a first in a long time. You know, our, you know, our girls cross-country team made states for the first time in 13 years. We had a boy golfer that made the state tournament for the first time. And then, you know, our girls soccer program making it to the state semifinals. Any questions on the high school? Recap's budgets before I turn it over to Jason?
Thanks, Denny. All right. So this first slide, you'll see the revenue for all the different sports at the middle school. You're only going to see activity mostly in just the, the fall sports. So George, if you go to the next slide, it breaks out the revenue that we had in fall sports, and we projected between volleyball and football to have about $10,000 in ticket sales, and we had about 11 and a half. So we're in a pretty good spot there. Moving along to the next slide. The, the expenses, we're in a pretty good spot there. Similar to the high school, you'll see a lot of money left over in the football line, and that's because a lot of those expenses happen after the season, when you're decommissioning helmets, getting stuff reconditioned, and then replacing some damaged items. And looking at volleyball, we came way under what we had projected. A part of the new budget this year, we, we had scheduled to buy volleyball uniforms, which, which we did, but we found a much cheaper option that was still a high quality. So we came in under. We're going to spend a little bit more of that because we replaced two nets in the beginning of the season. As the season went on, two more wore out, so we're, we're in the process of replacing those. Yeah, I was done. Thanks. Middle school budget in action, those are just some snapshots of the jerseys we bought for cross-country football, volleyball, and then the volleyball equipment that we bought, the, the nets and the crank systems. Looking at the next slide.
I think I skipped this slide.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I forgot this one. So that breaks down some of the new expenses we had this past fall. So eighth-grade football jerseys, actually, that backs up a little bit further beyond fall. So at the end of last school year, we bought eighth-grade football jerseys and cross-country singlets. This fall, we bought iPads for our ticket sellers. We were having to borrow those from the high school last fall, and we were leaving ourselves short with some tech on certain days. So I had to get a couple for the middle school. Volleyball nets and cranks, we, we bought this year because they weren't in working order anymore. And then volleyball uniforms. Looking at some more expenses that are to come that are new, seventh-grade football jerseys we'll, we'll replace at the end of the season, wrestling singlets, wrestling equipment, the two more volleyball nets I mentioned, track hurdles, basketball equipment, and coat shirts. And then, we talked about that one. And then, fall recap, seventh-grade football, they went undefeated in conference play, which was a huge success. Eighth-grade football, they had lots of injuries. I, I think they had four broken wrists in a matter of two weeks. I don't even know how that happens, but it did. But they had a lot of guys step into roles they weren't used to, and they did awesome for what they were forced into that, this past fall. Seventh-grade volleyball, they killed it, 27 and 7 between both teams. Eighth-grade volleyball, they won 12 games, but that almost doubled the amount that that class won last year. So there was a lot of growth shown with that team. Girls cross, cross-country, their season highlight was probably the second-place finish at the Keystone Invitational. And the boys' cross-country, the last race of the year was incredible. So it was wet course, it was cold, and 18 of the 27 boys, I don't remember the exact numbers, but they're up there, they all PR'd, which, which you want to see. You want to see at the end of the year, these kids getting faster, getting stronger, and that was, that's just incredible for, for any team to do that. Intermurals, we had volleyball and running, 31 runners, 60-something volleyball players. This winter, we're going to have bowling and basketball for intermurals again. And, and yeah, that's it. The next slide, so when we came to you guys last year, part of our rationale to ask for a bigger budget was the, the participation numbers keep growing and growing and growing. And we forecasted an increase this year. We got more kids than we even thought. So this fall, compared to last fall, we had 100 more kids, high school, middle school combined, which is, I mean, that's just so awesome. I can't read the numbers up there, but you can see them, high school and middle school, there were 30-some and 60-some maybe. And then, we added the extra eighth-grade volleyball team this year, and then the cheerleading squads for fall. So even if you take those numbers out, those new kids out, we still had 52 new kids in sports. And your budget is just helping these kids become better leaders, better- And your budget is just helping these kids become better leaders, better people, and we just can't thank you enough for that. So. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, guys. We appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you, no, ready to move on? All right, the last item that I have is a resolution to proceed with the submission of school improvement bonds, a resolution determining to proceed with submitting the question of the issuance of school improvement bonds in the aggregate principal amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-six million to the electors of the Strongsville City School District pursuant to section one-thirty-three point eighteen of the revised code.
I think this is a good time to table this discussion and take the opportunity to discuss what happened to our renewal levy on Tuesday. I want to open it up for comments, questions, just how we want to move forward.
Well, at least start with the results. So these are preliminary results, they're not final results. But according to the Board of Elections, Cuyahoga County Board of Elections, eight-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-eight people or voters voted for issue fourteen, and against was nine-thousand-seven-hundred-twelve. So that was fifty-four to forty-six percent. Fifty-four percent were against it, forty-six percent were for it. If we compare that to when the levy was originally passed in two thousand and nineteen, the percentages have flipped. In two thousand and nineteen, approximately fifty-four percent of the voters were for it. Approximately forty-six percent of the voters were against it. The numbers obviously are different. The, when it was originally passed in May, it was a primary election, not a general election, so the numbers were different. But I think it makes sense that, A, we need to wait for more of the voting results to come out. The county will give precinct by precinct results. I know in conversations with George, we've already been looking at some comparisons with other districts, other communities around us to try to gauge what was different when, in May, the community supported an additional tax levy. So when it was first passed, it was a pure additional tax. And on Tuesday, that was a renewal, but the renewal failed. So I think it behooves us to be patient, to take some time to figure out what we think what we think the community was telling us and what we think our response is as a board.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have anything additional to add, other than to say that I agree with Richard that we need to look at everything when it becomes available, slow down. Obviously, table this bond issue. I don't see how we move forward with this at the present moment without full information, so thanks for all those details, Richard, I appreciate it.
Sure, I think, I mean, I think it's common sense to say we, as a board, have no business saying, let's move forward with a bond when obviously, we need to understand why what we consider to be our operating funds, our regular operating funds, and it was a renewal. So we need to investigate that and then determine that. I was just going to ask George if you can review with us our deadline dates for when we do need to make decisions for the May, I'm sorry, for the March primary next year.
Yep, so just kind of working backwards. The filing date for the renewal levy is December twentieth, and the bond filing date is December twelfth. For the, I'll just start with the bond because it's simpler. For the bond, we just have one resolution to approve for that. So we have December, or November twenty-first board meeting and December seventh board meeting left prior to December twelfth. Also, there could be a special board meeting in between as well. And then for the renewal levy, there's, it's a two-step resolution process. Resolution one, the board authorizes me to go to the county to get it certified. And then once we get that certification, resolution two then comes back to the board, and that's the one that formally put it on the ballot for March. Again, we have November, for two resolutions, we have November twenty-first and December seventh, unless there's a special board meeting somewhere in between. But all said and done, for the renewal, has to be, everything has to be approved and filed with the Board of Elections on the twentieth by four o'clock. And same with the bond. If we were to move forward with the bond, that filing date is December twelfth for the county at four P M.
Are you thinking about moving on with the bond? I'm confused. I thought we were going to set that aside and worry about the renewal, or am I wrong?
No, I think, I think that's the consensus.
Again, I want to, I want to take the time to review the voting data, but I would, I would think that would be the course of action. I don't, I don't see us at this stage going forward with a bond.
Yeah.
It would be foolish at best.
Yeah, I agree.
Richard, do you happen to know how long it takes the county to give the precinct by precinct date?
It's already out.
The precinct by precinct, though?
They're still counting.
They're still counting.
Well, it's pretty much, it's out. For maybe other things, I don't know. But I know for some races, it's out.
There is, the
The precinct by precinct.
Yeah, I've not, I looked at it, I looked for it today. I did not see it today for Strongsville. I would expect we'd see it within a week. You'll see, I forget the jargon, but there's the preliminary results. And then they have to allow enough time for absentee ballots that were mailed on the deadline of Monday, but the postman, for whatever reason, hasn't delivered them. So then those have to come in, those have to be tabulated, and then you will get final numbers. And we should have those before the next board meeting.
When I checked the Board of Education calendar today, it said the thirteenth, they would stop counting.
Right. If the mailman hasn't shown up yet.
Yes, by the thirteenth.
I mean, but I think you could have a pretty well idea without those being counted.
Correct, yes.
I mean, you'll know where we won and where we lost.
Right, right. Well, we do need to give George direction about putting the resolution on for the next meeting for the renewal levy in March. Are we ready to do that?
I would be ready to prepare the language to have it on the agenda, and then at the, the same way we're tabling it now. If, if the tea leaves are such that we don't feel it's wise, we would table it. But if the tea leaves are such that we feel it's wise, we would be in a position to move forward.
Okay, okay.
So just so I'm clear, for the November twenty-first board meeting, have resolution one for the renewal levy? And then just, what's the direction for the?
For the bond, I think consensus is to not
It is tabled until we untable it.
Yes. Does anyone have any other questions or comments regarding how we'll move forward? Nope. Okay. We're good?
That concludes my report, if there's anything else.
Thank you, George. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Ms. Hausum. Nothing under my section for tonight. Under Business Services, we do have one item as a gift, be resolved upon my recommendation that the following gift be approved. Gregory Modic donated fifteen hundred dollars to cover the approximate cost of the installation of a section of sidewalk at Strongsville Middle School. So to give some details, first of all, how phenomenal is this? So Greg was a part of our elementary facilities planning committee. He's got kids at the middle school, and he does the drop-off loop. And said, hey, I've got this idea that in the back part, I think we can move traffic further if we extend the sidewalk a little bit. Kind of mapped it out and drew it. He met with Steve and Keith and went over there. And we didn't ask, but he said, hey, let me donate the materials to do it so you guys can have the sidewalk. And so I think they're planning on having it in the spring. So it will be poured in the spring, extend the sidewalk on the Olympia side of the property to connect a few sidewalks that way, you know, seven to eight cars can load at the same time instead of a handful. That will hopefully speed up. So I appreciate somebody saying, hey, you know, again, very generous that he wanted to cover the cost, but say, hey, here's a way to speed it up. I've mapped it out for you. And I got the opportunity to meet his wife today, subbing in one of our classrooms, so it was awesome to meet her as well.
I know, Greg.
Yeah, thanks to Greg for that great donation and the idea to solve a problem that he was experiencing as a parent, so we appreciate that. Under Curriculum, we have a field trip, overnight trip that has already passed because of the timing. As, as Denny shared, congratulations to our girls cross-country team. They made states between our meetings, so this is after the fact. But be it resolved upon my recommendation that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School girls cross-country team that traveled to Columbus to participate in the state championship meet. It took place November third to fourth, and transportation was via school bus, and expenses were paid by the athletic boosters. Under Student Services, we have one item, be resolved upon my recommendation that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with A S G Education Services, Inc., a delete program for placement of a student with disabilities for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we do have one item under H R, so I'll turn it over to Jenny for that.
I thought you were just going to keep going. You're doing so good. Just under Human Resources this evening, we have two resignations for non-certificated staff.
And we have no report under Technology, so that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to item J, Adoption of the Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of consent calendar at this point in the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type dash action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And does anybody have anything that they would like to add or remove? Okay, George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Dochek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Board of Education Other. I know we normally do this in a regular meeting, but I just want to let everybody know that we're, have a very busy week next week. Tuesday night, we have a facilities meeting here at the board building. Wednesday night, we have a diversity council meeting here at the board building. And Thursday night, we have a finance committee meeting at the high school. Yes. All of them are, well, I think Tuesday night's at seven, Wednesday and Thursday are six-thirty.
Isn't ours six-thirty?
Yeah, six-thirty, yes. And those meetings are open to the public, so that's why I just want to make sure that everybody knew that we were having those meetings. Anybody have anything others to add?
Just this weekend is the Strongsville Education Foundation. It's casino night. I'm sure they would be more than happy if you want to buy a ticket. It sounds like fun, it's at the rec center, I think it starts at seven. They've worked really hard, so if there's anybody out there that didn't know about it, you know, you can go to their website and get tickets.
Any other others?
I was just going to say that tomorrow, November tenth, is the two-hundred-forty-eighth birthday of the United States Marine Corps. So if you know any Marine Corps service people, wish them a happy birthday. And then it, we shouldn't fail to remember that on November eleventh is Veterans Day. So if you know any veterans, thank them for their service. And then November twelfth is Diwali, so if you know anyone who celebrates Diwali, wish them a happy Diwali. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other others? Hearing none, move on. Executive session, we do have need for executive session tonight to discuss.
To consider the employment or dismissal of a public employee, to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
And Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
We'll enter into executive session at approximately seven fifty-five. We do not foresee having any additional business to discuss in public, so I'd like to wish everyone a good night.